Ooh, has it been, has it been properly decontaminated?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Safety first.
It won't come over the airwaves. All right, we will call the April virtual meeting of the Shrewsbury Township Board of Supervisors to order. And while we typically have the pledge to the flag, since we're all scattered in different locations, I thought maybe we would just replace that with a moment of silence that each can reflect in their own way on the COVID attack. Just as some background, my numbers are 400,000 cases in the U.S. with about 16,000 deaths in Pennsylvania, which ranks eighth in the nation. There have been about 15,000 cases, and I believe it's up to around 300 deaths. In York Township, it's saying 233, and there was a second death now, so there have been two deaths. Plus, of course, worldwide, it's about a million and a half cases with 82 known dead. And I guess untold financial losses and stress. So maybe we just take a moment for ourselves, and then we'll jump back in here. All right, if we continue, we'll run through some announcements, some of them a little bit different because of today's situation. But anyway, glad everybody can join us. And for those who are out there observing, we appreciate your able to be with us in these very unusual and trying times. And I think, at least for the record, we can state we appreciate the patience and cooperation of our residents and our businesses as we kind of navigate through these uncharted waters. So this is our first digital virtual BOS meeting. So we'll all learn together the best way to kind of work through this technology. We know that everybody can hear everybody, so that should allow us to proceed. The meeting is being recorded, and it will be posted on the township website. Agenda is available on the website. Written minutes will be available after approval by the board. As usual, there'll be two opportunities for public comment. And if somebody wishes to comment during the board's consideration of an issue, if you're on video and can wave a hand to get our attention, if you're in by phone, just kind of wait for a break in the ongoing conversation, and we certainly will listen to you as we might debate. A couple of things for the board. We're going to have to work at not over speaking each other or interrupting, I guess, because sometimes there's a time delay. Sometimes a little freeze in the action. Sometimes there's a little delay, so we'll, we'll kind of work together to make sure we all get that opportunity to speak in a handway if we're working video too, if somebody wants to jump in. I think for simplicity, Todd and I talked in this meeting, we would just vote by either all in favor or all opposed rather than a roll call. I think Todd said that'll be a little easier for him in the minutes and so forth. The manager, as you most, most of you know, is able to determine how many people are participating in, at any one time, and whether they're participating by video or by phone. Again, for the record, we did hold an emergency executive session on Friday night, March 27th. That was in response to COVID-19 attack. Purpose was to discuss employee policies related to the COVID-19. That included work hours, flexibility, scheduling, staggering shifts, social distancing, inflammation, and working from home. We've had a good test of the system. So I think to help everybody know who we are, I thought we would still do our self introductions in the same order that we sit at the DAS. And maybe everybody can note who they are, how they're participating, and where they're participating from. And I guess that would put Dave up first.
Dave Bros? I wasn't taking notes. He said, what, where I'm participating from is my living room.
And how?
Better known as San Francisco by the background.
We appreciate the background, by the way.
Yes, yes, thank you. Was there something else in there?
And you're, and you're by video.
Uh, yes, yes, by video, thank you.
You got you. Right now, I don't know which one you're calling which. Is it Jeff or Jeffrey, Todd?
The new one I was calling Jeffrey.
All right, so Jeffrey's up next.
Hey, Jeff Rogers, the newbie, and talking from my home office on video.
Very good. All right, I'm Art Rutledge, so I'll be chairing the meeting. I am also on video and from my home office.
I'm Bob Brown. I'm participating, participating by phone from my home.
Thank you, Bob. And last but not least.
I'm Jeff Reynolds, I'm video from home.
Okay. We did excuse our solicitor from the meeting. We'll let Todd introduce himself. So we know where he is.
Yeah. Todd Ziegler, Township Manager, and I am videoing from my office at the Township Office.
And I guess we have Wendy kind of in the background as recording secretary, secretary observing us right now.
Yes, and she's, uh, just for the record, she is videoing as well from her home.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we can move on to our agenda. And appropriate, the COVID-19 becomes the first thing on the agenda. And I guess, Todd, that is to formally approve our declaration of disaster, which was done initially and informally by a, I think, email poll of all the supervisors. And so everyone knows this is necessary to enable us to apply for federal and state aid, and it also allows certain nonprofits to try to proceed to get aid. And they cannot do that if we don't declare the, yeah, a disaster declaration. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Todd?
Just to add, as you had mentioned, I did a vote on an emergency basis because of being a disaster emergency declaration, and that was on June 16th. So purpose of tonight is the board is formally together.
Not June 16th, right?
No, I'm sorry, it's to remain, it's to remain in effect through June 16th. Yes, it's effective March 19th. And that's when I got the email approval from the board. It's effective for 90 days, so it'll be effective through June 16th of 2020. And the purpose of tonight, having it on the agendas for the board to formally ratify that emergency approval.
Once this is, I'm sorry, Art.
No, you go.
Once this is approved, do we all have to sign it for it to be effective and legal? I see the spots on the back.
Yeah.
Do, do we have a, just to stop in and, and, you know, obtain so, or maintain social distancing for that? Or what, what's, what's the point?
That's a good question. We, what we've submitted already is acceptable to the state.
Okay, good.
Where I, I just typed in your name, shown it as a signature. We have it recorded in the minutes. So my thoughts are, for what we have this evening to act on, I will hold those until we can all meet again in per, in person. If it comes up that they need actual signatures, then I'll notify the board members, and we'll make arrangements for you to stop in, but.
Okay.
I don't think there's any need to come in, so good question.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Can I make a motion to accept the, or not accept, I guess, make the declaration of a disaster emergency?
You may, and you did.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? So this time we'll vote just all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any, any opposed, say aye. So we have a five votes to the affirmative, the declaration is approved. Todd, anything else you want to say? I don't know if you want to do a couple of brief updates on what the township's done to try to mitigate the spread of the COVID or?
Yeah, I mean, we, of course, if you all know from watching the news and what have you, it's constantly changing. It's kind of hard to keep up with, it's almost a full-time job to do that in itself. You know, to the extent possible, we're trying to keep information or some links on the township website. Probably, and I don't know that the public will, will, has or will see any impact by this, but as you know, since middle of March, the office has been closed to the public. However, we've been open and, and working, taking phone calls, emails, you know, processing requests and so forth. Since the governor's stay-at-home order became effective, the, the office is still manned during our regular hours. The only difference is Wendy, Megan, and myself are alternating our times so that we're not in here at the same time. So up until the stay-at-home order came in, all three of us were in here working. Now we're just alternating and working from home when we're not in here. As far as our maintenance crew, as you know, there's seven of them. Probably, I think it was the middle of March, Mike McLean, our maintenance supervisor, the six that report to him, he had them, he had them paired up as teams of two, and assigned each of those teams to an individual vehicle, and that's the vehicle they're, they're working with for the duration. When the, and then we were alternating their, their days so that they weren't all six in on the same day and, and steering their work shifts. So the max they overlapped was four people. And again, Mike tried to assign them different areas of the township and different tasks. Since the stay-at-home order came about, we have them, they're, they're working 10-hour days, but currently they are only working two 10-hour days, 20 hours. And then the township is paying, but is paying them for 40 hours. And the reason for that is, first and foremost, you know, we want to do our part to try to prevent the spread of the virus. Second thing is, you know, we want to keep our employees healthy, keep their families healthy. And the other thing is, we've talked about, and we're going to talk about this in executive session later, is do, do we want to furlough them, you know, have them only work part-time and have them sign up unemployment? There are some decisions we have to make. Some municipalities, I know Cudores Township for the last three weeks, actually, they're on their fourth week, I guess. And Hopewell, I don't know if they still are, but I know they started out when they first did the non-life sustaining back on the, the 19th of March. I know their road crew has not been working at all. They've all been at home just on standby. And they're still paying them. I don't know if that's still the case for Hopewell Township or not. So some others are having stagger, working part-time. There, there's no two alike. So that's up to each individual governing body. Not saying one is right or wrong over the other. It's just, you know, everybody's in this and learning together, so. But I can tell you that one of the concerns expressed was if you don't have them at least part-time, and, and you have them totally laid off, that they draw unemployment, then we would run into a problem if we had to call them in for emergencies. Granted, we don't, shouldn't have any snow emergencies, but you know, it's that time of year where, you know, it's spring, could end up, you know, with some flooding or, you know, it's a tornado season soon around the corner, so. But that's where we're at as far as the township. I'd say we have skeleton crews working, but we're working and we're trying to meet all the needs of the township and answering phones and inquiries and so forth.
Have closed the parks, although we have not actively gone out and looked or done a lot of enforcement, but at least the warning signs are there that people shouldn't be using them. So that probably covers a lot of what we've done positively to try to mitigate the spread. Any, any other comments or questions related to anything with the COVID-19? Right, let's move on to approval of minutes of the March meeting. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Again, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say aye. Minutes are approved with five affirmative votes. We have the treasures report in front of us. I would note that of the revenues, 52,000 of that are bonds because of uncompleted driveways and lawns and things and Hamilton overlooks. So while that's in our revenue, it's, it's eventually going to go back to the builder when they complete those, those things.
Notice the expenditures were down considerably. Is that COVID-related, just with lack of, of, of working, or is there something else for that?
No, no, COVID didn't have any impact on that. If any, if any impact on COVID, it would have been the revenue side because we're not issuing permits right now. And, and if I can, I want to just make one comment about the expenditures. There is an expense on there, I think it's 700 and some dollars or whatever, to the IRS for a penalty. I am challenging that. I did pay it because if you pay it, even while you're challenging it, they continue to add late fees and all that good stuff. But that took place, that's a result of, I think it was back in November. Anyway, and we tried to make the online payment, which we do, because we pay every time we do payroll. The site was down and tried to pay it actually going on the IRS website, and that site was down. Fortunately, we printed those screens. So we have documentation. I expect that that will probably be waived, but I just wanted to explain why that was on there and that we are going to challenge it, so. I figure when I started, we had a, and it was before my time and not a result of me, Jeff probably remembers, but there was an IRS penalty of a little over $10,000.
Yeah.
And I was not here to have anything to do with it, but we managed to get that one squared away that we didn't pay anything into it, so.
Nice.
I'm optimistic that we'll get this resolved, but like I said, I wanted to pay it so it didn't continue to accrue penalties and so. Pardon?
Todd, did we, did we get the snow plows yet?
No.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what was that, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I agree with you, that's the best way to handle it.
Yeah.
And then they're usually pretty good about, you know, answering with the positive.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
Any other questions, comments on the treasures report?
I would like to make a motion to approve the treasures report.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? We shall vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say, say aye. Five votes to the affirmative, the treasures report is approved. We have, I think, for our information, the actual versus budget. It's the first quarter, so a lot of things don't line up to be proportional quarter to quarter, but I certainly don't see anything on it that would, looks out of line or would give me concerns. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I guess we have an overriding concern, it's how much our revenue might be affected by extensions and things related to COVID, but I think fortunately, we're in very good shape to weather those delays. So I open that to questions for Todd, if anybody has any.
Did, I, I'm still learning this Zoom. Did, is everyone seeing on their screen this little snapshot?
I do, very clear.
Yeah, as Art said, you know, for the first quarter, our revenues ahead of our expenditures. But again, you know, there's certain revenues that come in all at once and very early. For example, just like with the hydrant fund, you know, we continue to pay the same hydrant bill quarterly. However, we don't see the bulk of that revenue until taxes are collected in April and May. So that's why we keep a little bit of a cash reserve to cover us for those first several months of the year. Same thing holds true with the streetlight fund. We don't even invoice that until July 1st, I think it is, or May. I have to check with Wendy, but it, it's a few months out yet before we see any revenue from that. So that's why you're seeing our expenses much higher than our income. But you know, by the time we get to third quarter, that's, that's going to be a positive number.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, just one other quick note. You can see the revenue for the first quarter in the sewer fund really high. That's because there was a home sold and they paid off the balance of their note, which was around 14,500, so that's what inflated that number.
That's good, that helps that fund a little bit.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Right. That place Phil sold.
Uh, that was the, gosh, let me think which one that was. Oh my God.
It's not one of the, it's not one of the ones we're chasing.
No, 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 no.
Right.
How, was it Phil Andres or?
I think it was Phil Andres, actually.
That's stolen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was it, but.
Do they have to pay it all, or is that just an option if they?
That's an option. Yeah, we, they, they can continue to make the quarterly payments, but some have just decided that they were going to take care of it upfront and then it was done.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Anything else? You also have for information, the auditor's report. Again, for as many years as I've been on the board, there have been no findings or issues with the report, so I guess along, congratulations to Todd and the crew for that. If there are any questions, I'm sure Todd can take those. Everybody's silent, so I guess we move on. We would have arrived at our actually first opportunity for public comment. I'm not sure we have anybody else that has joined us. I guess, Todd, you would know if they did.
The, the, the only visitor that we have is, uh, looks like is Chad Myers and Phil Robinson.
All right. So do either of those wish to address the board at this time?
Phil was, Phil was muted, so I don't know if he heard that or.
Just came off, he's good.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I, I, I'm okay right now.
All right, well, we've reached, Phil, the first opportunity for public comment, so if there, if there is any from either you or Chad at the present time, you're the only two visitors.
I, I think are, I think they both indicated that they're fine right now.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that. Ordinances and regulations come up next. And Todd, we have an addition, some additions to the ag security area. I did ask Todd what, what that meant to the owner. Now, I'll let, let you explain it because you explained it to me, the benefit that comes to the owner for that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the largest benefit, and, and Jeff can probably add a little more to this, but the ag security area, overall, the, the greatest benefit is if you go to put your property into ag preservation, it has to be in the ag security area. And my understanding is both of these property owners are looking to do that. However, it has to be placed in the ag security area first. You know, other than that, it, I don't really provide you any, there's no financial benefit to being in the ag security area. Ag preservation, yes.
So it's a step required, a step required to get to the ag preservation, which, which as a board, we have always typically encouraged.
Right.
Right. So we would need to have a motion to approve these additions to ag security, right?
That is correct, yes.
I'll make a motion.
I will second that motion. Oh.
So that was, uh, I'd say Jeff, Jeff Reynolds made the first.
I seconded, and then Bob had a question.
I just had a question, looks like, is this a typo on there when you go down like the fourth, fourth paragraph from on down where it says ADA instead of ASA?
Uh, let me look here.
I think ASA is ag security area, right?
Yeah, and it says, but the existing ADA was, what does that mean?
No, it, um, it should be A, uh, ASA.
Okay.
Thank you.
They all say ADA.
Right, there's four places that it says ADA. I think.
Yeah.
The first, the first one is ASA.
That's funny, because this was a resolution from 2016, and it obviously said the same thing. I, I just changed the dates and the acreage, but, okay, but I'll make that, thank you, Bob.
Well, we do have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Then we will go ahead and vote. Again, everyone in favor, say aye.
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 If there's anyone opposed, say aye. Five votes to the affirmative, that's approved.
If I can just, if I can just add for the purpose of the minutes, this resolution adds 212.88 acres, bringing the total acreage since 1988 in the township under ag security, 8,328 acres, well, it's 8,328.26 acres. I just think to add that in the minutes.
Okay, good. A nice addition, too. Not anything that you get like these that I need to sign, we'll just do like we've done some other things. You get it all together, and I'll just stop by one night when nobody's there and sign anything you need.
Okay, sounds good, yep.
Okay, so the next item would be, I guess, the extension, well, that's it in ordinances and resolutions, so we moved to subdivision and land development. I believe the only thing we have there are a couple of reapprovals.
Yeah, um, what, what I'm going to suggest here to the board, Kristen Murray, everyone remember that one that was on West Forest where they just did a small add-on lot from the 14-acre parcel to accommodate the garage it was built. Everything's pretty much ready to go, just need to, really, it's up to them to provide us with the, the deed signs so that we can record it. And then the other thing is steel farm land. I would ask that we just postpone that one simply because I spoke to the owner of that property today, and he told me that he's going to talk to Jason Brennaman, his engineer, but he said he is, he has no intentions of moving forward with that particular project on that piece of property. They have a couple of other ideas that he's exploring, and I just told him to think about it, and if he's definitely not going to pursue it, I asked that he submit a letter of withdrawal so that we can formally act on that, make it part of the record, and then take that one off the list.
Good.
So do, do we need to extend it, though, for the month? Because it looks like it's,
No.
It expires at the beginning of this, this month.
Here's the critical thing with that. The, the only reason that we do the three-month extensions is it's been three months for them. So let's say they came in, in one month, and they were ready to have it recorded. Your county recorder of deeds will not record anything past 90 days of the board last acting on it. on it. So that's why we do the 90 days. So we would be out, you know, 120 days if we put the last date that the board acted on it. So I just do it so that we don't have to wait another, you know, month or so. And if, and I'm going to ask the board also to hold up, just for a second, I want to do a quick check of something. Hi, Wendy. It just jumped to your screen. I don't know why, but if Todd did something or not. No, I think she has herself muted.
Yeah, she does.
Just bear with me here, I want to look at something because I actually think we do not need to do the other one as well. I think that was a last-minute deal, or I think we actually did get that one recorded. So I'm actually pulling up from the recorder of deeds here and looking real quick. Okay. Yeah, so I'm going to withdraw the first one for the Murray. And just ask you to table, and I don't think you need a vote or anything, as long as there's a consensus. Just to table the steel farm land to see if we get that withdrawal letter, because talking to him today, they clearly are not going to come in within the next month to have it recorded.
All right, so withdraw the one, and unless I hear any objection, we were just tabling the steel farm.
Correct.
Yep. And I didn't hear any objections.
Sounds good.
Move forward.
We're withdrawing, they're withdrawing the Murray one?
No, 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 I'm withdrawing it from the agenda, because I, that was a last-minute deal, and, yeah, so, Art, if I may at this point, I would like to just run by the board that Ken Court.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yep.
So what I want to do here, hopefully this will share. Can everyone see the parcel map?
I can.
Okay.
Yep.
What, we had staff review yesterday morning, and, you know, here's 83, of course, as you can see, running up through here. This is a Sescana trail over here to the left, east side of 83. This is Ken Court, which comes off of Ken Road. So if you come off the trail on Plank Road, and you cross over 83, you go out there just a little piece, and then Ken Road cuts up, and there's just several homes up in there. Anyway, this was just a pre-app consultation. Some folks by the name of Amy own this parcel right here, okay? This is a private drive, it's only about eight or nine feet wide, and I think their easement's only for about 10 feet. Amy's purchased this property. They also recently purchased this property, okay? What they would like to do, this parcel here is owned by, gosh, what was her name?
Which parcel? I'm sorry, I was zoomed in.
This parcel right here.
Got you, got you.
Yeah, now what makes this one unique, this piece here, is this little piece here, about four and a half acres, okay, is part of this parcel. However, they're not contiguous, okay? They don't connect each other. So these folks here that own these two lots have a purchase agreement in place to have this subdivided off of this tract. And again, I don't think I can zoom out here, but I would say about half of this parcel is actually located in Hopewell Township, and only half of it is in Shrewsbury Township. So they would like to sub this off, and at this point in time, they probably, they haven't made their mind up how they would do it. At minimum, they would, there would be a subdivision taking this off, but there would also be a reverse subdivision merging these two parcels here, okay? And in doing so, they would have to create a new deed. The plan would be just like the others that we've done in the past, that, you know, there can't be subdivisions and so forth. Thing is, this has to remain agricultural according to the zoning ordinance to allow something like this to happen, so they can't buy this. So that would be a note, buy it and put it in the woods. So there'd have to be a note on the plan that there are no development rights with this other than one that exists for the house now, and that this area must remain open and utilize in agriculture. Now, they haven't decided, but they own this as a totally separate parcel. They're thinking about maybe merging and making this, you know, one parcel that's basically used shape. So this house has a parcel, or I'm sorry, an E D, or development right.
There you go.
This one has a development right. So as it exists today, there is a potential that there could be another house built back here. So if this is all merged, the plan would state that there's two development rights, one for the main house and one where you could sub off a 50,000 square foot lot. Under our ordinance, they wouldn't be able to do that, because they would not be able to meet the minimum private drive requirements without getting additional lands from this person here, which has made it very clear over the years that they are not going to give anyone anything. So, but these folks, the main reason they want to do this is they want to remain isolated, you know, they want to be back there by themselves. And what their long-term plan is, this property here, okay, is for sale, and it's one parcel that jumps over 83 and has this little piece, which really has no value because it is attached to this parcel. So again, if someone wanted to build here, they would not be able to build out here along the trail, okay? But the other problem they run into is they would have to upgrade this to the standards of a private street, and there's just, there's no, they can't meet that. So they talked to the person trying to sell this, and they were hoping that they would sell this piece, and their ultimate goal is, is that this is all one tract, okay? So they understand that if this piece on the east side of 83 is subdivided off of this, they get no development right for this, because the development right has to stay here with this parcel. So if all four of these were merged into one parcel, it would be two development rights, the same as what's there now. So staff looked at the ordinance, we believe that there's a provision in there that allows for that to happen. However, before we had these folks go any further ahead, we just wanted to run it by, no votes required or anything, we just wanted to kind of get a sense from the board that you guys were comfortable with this before they submit a plan and spend money, and, you know, of course, you have to meet all the other ordinance requirements, but.
In part of that, too, Todd, if they put all that together, they have enough that they can do what they want to do with that in ag?
Yeah, it's all ag, and they want to put it in clean and green.
Right, and they need 10 acres to do that, right?
And, yeah, with all four of those parcels, they're just a hair over 10. So, but, so, anyway, just wanted to run it by the board, does anyone have any concerns, major concerns at this point?
I have none.
I don't. Looks good.
Okay, all right. And they did indicate that, you know, the reason they're doing this is because they don't want any other houses back there, so the one development right, there would be remaining, their idea, and they brought it up to us, is that they would probably want to sell it, so. Okay.
Okay. Didn't hear any objections?
Nope. I applaud them for taking the initiative to secure their own view.
Yes.
There you go.
We've had conversations about that in the past, I think that's why Todd's laughing.
Yes.
But, if they don't want any more houses, if they don't want any more houses back there, buy the land themselves, that we don't worry about it.
Yeah, you got it. All right, I guess we move to reports, and I think there are a few things you wanted to comment on before we got the questions on your report, Todd.
First one is the 2019 recycling report. Just wanted to let you know, just an FYI, that the curbside recycling, and I didn't have a chance to pull previous years to see what kind of impact, you know, this, you know, China, you know, kind of losing the market, what kind of impact that had. I might do that for next month, just for comparison purposes. But it was 486 tons of residential curbside recycling collected, and Penn Waste and Penn Waste and
Republic.
Republic combined indicated that they collected 1,251 tons of recycling from township
From all town, from our township?
From Shrewsbury Township, yes.
So Penn Waste was in it long enough last year to get the most of it? Looks like we have Stan joining us.
Yep, I'm here.
The other thing is, if you remember our previous workers' comp carrier, KMIT, that we had issues with last spring about this time, they did their 2018 workers' comp audit as well as their 2019 workers' comp audit. So if you're aware, we pay in based on projected payroll, and then they come back and they do an audit based on actual payroll. And between those two years, we received a refund check of $6,175. So I just want to bring that.
Is the compensation dropped, Chris?
Yes.
The, I'm confused, what, how did we get money back from them if we were too much of a risk that they didn't want us anymore?
Well, your premium is based on a certain classification that's determined by the Department of Labor and Industry, and there's a rating that's assigned to that. And regardless of what they paid out or not, they can't collect more than what those rates are that are approved by Labor and Industry.
So they collected too much, so that's why they gave it?
Too much in premiums, and what's been paid out or not paid out has no bearings on it.
Okay.
Yeah. And the last thing, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date that Murphy didn't hate for, they're still continuing even under this COVID-19, you know, because they can all work from home. They, they met with myself via Zoom to talk about the office, and, you know, what makes sense, what doesn't, what works, what doesn't, just to try and to get a sense of what we have here, and what we would need in a new place, and what we wouldn't. So that was a, I think I was on with them about an hour and a half. One person was out from their office today just to do a walkthrough, to get a visual what's really here. Same person met down at the shop today with Mike. And Art also had a video conference with them today, and they are more than happy to talk to any other board member if you have an interest. Let me know, and I will share your contact information with them. Where they go from here now, they will start pulling together these schematic designs, and they'll come back, my understanding with, I think it's around five or six different concepts that we then, the board as a whole, you know, will discuss and talk about, and, you know, you either say, yeah, I like this one, or I like a little bit of this, or a little bit of that one. So through their conversations with us, they're going to kind of put something together. As I said, we'll probably get five or six different proposed layouts for us then to go over, and then the board will make a decision as to which one they'd like to go with before they get into nitty-gritty of the design. So is any board member interested in talking to them, or are you okay with what, you know, Art, myself, and?
I'd like to see what the, what the different choices are, and, you know, get feedback from you and from Wendy and Art and everybody, of course, to see what we think the best one is. Did you say that that would be happening at some point then, or are you just foregoing that?
Yeah, this, today is just, what they're doing right now is just talking to us, getting a feel what we'd like to see, don't want to see, or whatever. And I shared all that from the office perspective. Mike, you know, dealt with the shop. Art, I think probably, I'll let him speak for himself, I think he probably spoke more about the admin office, but, yeah, the, what'll happen then from this point, based on that information, they are going to go back and start working on these designs, conceptual layouts, and then that will definitely come back to the full board for you all to look at, review, and have discussions about, and it'll be the board that makes that ultimate decision as far as what layout.
And I assume at that time, if the board wanted to, the whole board could meet with the authors of those plans.
Correct, yeah.
Do we have a timeline about when we think that'll be backed by?
I'd have to look at the schedule. I would think that we will probably see that, I would think probably because they, they're claiming that, you know, by the end of the year, that they would have the full design and everything completed. So I would be thinking no more than two months, Todd.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else you have, Todd, or any questions?
No, that's all I had. Yeah, that's all I have at this point.
Any questions from anybody else on Todd's report? All right, we move on. Solicitor, we're excused from this meeting, so nothing there. And I think we just got bare bones on the, actually, we didn't get a bare bones on the code enforcement, so.
Yes, and I apologize, I had just not had time to get my report in full writing, but I will get that to you for March. If not by the end of the day tomorrow, I'll definitely have it for you on Monday. I've gone out and have done some inspections and so forth. Hasn't been a lot of changes since last month, because as you know, we, with this construction industry and the COVID, and the governor's order consumed a bit of time.
Plus, the courts aren't in session either, are they? Anything that involves fines or?
No, I don't think it is. Not to, yeah. The other thing is, I'm just trying to think of anything major, the, I can tell you, the apartment on the third floor of that garage on Pleasant Valley. Uh, if you recall, that uh, property owner, they, they have an attorney, but it's been very. Been nothing negative, um. It, it's all been very positive and, you know, they reached out and asked, you know, with this COVID, and, and I told them. Given basically April's been wiped out, uh, their contractors can't come out, so I extended that till May thirty-first. Um, and then, of course, we'll see how things go, and if we need to. Is, you know, I, I know the board shares my thoughts, that our, our goal should be compliance, not penalties and fines. So they've been very cooperative right out the gate. Um, they didn't deny that it shouldn't be there, um, so. So that's moving along. Um, the only thing that you're going to see new on the report that I think's probably. Pretty significant is on Kratz Road. Um. There's uh, i- i- if anyone's familiar, um, it's just not the, if you're coming out of the borough. Down Kratz Road towards Glen Valley, it's not the first farm on your right that sits well back off the road. Uh, with the stone house, but you go down, I call it the S curve. Um, and on that last curve on your right, pretty close to the road, there's a, a nice stone house with a red, big red barn up in the back there. Um, there's a Miller that lives there now, they're only there a couple of years, I don't even know, maybe.
Oh, they're not even there a year.
Oh, it's not even a year?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Um, anyway, uh, one thing I need to look at tomorrow, I have on my list, I want to go out, um. When I drove through there on Saturday, I took notice that they were building a stone wall along the road. Um, they did get a permit for the one stone wall, that one was well off the road, this other one looks pretty close to the shoulder. And they did not get a permit, but. But we are going to be sending them a zoning violation notice, uh, because they are operating a wedding venue out of there. Um. It uh, was brought to our attention and uh. We, uh, I, I did a little research on Facebook and so forth, and there's a website, there's a, a Facebook page for it. And lots of pictures of weddings that have already taken place and, um. There's a, a wedding coming up in October, um, and they're talking about. The uh, the old stone, stone house, I think is what it's called, but. Anyway, it's, it's in the Ag District. Stone Farm, okay. Um, it's clearly a violation, so we will be, you'll see that on your report, that's, that's pretty significant because, um. You know, these folks, some, you know, obviously have invested some money and so forth, but, you know, unfortunately, um. They, they either didn't ask questions or. I, I can't answer the reason why, but, so that's probably the most significant thing that we're going to see at this point. So.
Okay. Unless there are other questions on that, I think the same on the maintenance report, right?
Yeah, and I'll just show you here real quickly, um, two things. Uh, again, you know, working with Mike, um, I've been kind of tied up. You're uh, familiar with. Um, this particular report, you know, where we talk about the uh, the roads and so forth.
Right.
Um, something we've added, at least uh, during this busy time of the year. Is um, and I'll show you here just quickly, a little snapshot of it. Uh, we're also going to be starting to share a. Um, very similar report uh, with the parks.
Good.
Um, of like specific things that we need to do. Um, a, a, a punch list of work, so there's a lot more than what I'm showing here, but, um. So.
Well, good, that'll be very helpful and it'll fit right in when we get to a point where we can um, start the. Kind of walking through the park we talked about.
Yeah, and, and some of these things like, you know, Strawberry Fields, that retaining wall is completed. Um, but that's on that list, and they've been out doing marching and, and, and playground marching. So some of these things will be, show off on the report, um, as completed, but uh, so.
Good, I like.
We'll have that as well.
I like that, that's good.
Alright.
Alright. Had um, the engineer report, and I will say that was very thorough, very comprehensive. Some pictures and all added, so we can probably tell that, that Jeff is now in the field, much right now, he's, he's doing a lot of. A very thorough report, and I guess you've got a, a little bit of an update on Lime Road.
Yeah, what I did was, um, I had sent an email to Gary Peacock and um, Emily. Nita, Nidai, um, with Your County Conservation District. And uh, I just simply asked them, they had their meeting on uh, March nineteenth internally. To review the applications for the grants, uh, that fall under the program where we applied for Lime Road. And the Conservation Board of Directors meets tomorrow to approve their recommendation, so I sent an email. And I said, I know tomorrow is, is the final decision, I said, but I'm meeting with the board tonight, and I didn't know if you have anything I could. Share with them, um, as to whether or not even, uh, there's the recommendation, uh, to approve the project. And I did uh, get an email back, um, that the, the committee that met on March nineteenth. Recommended funding for Lime Road, and it says the board, the district board. Will most likely approve this recommendation tomorrow, so. Nothing's done until the ink is dry, but it, it looks very promising.
He didn't say how much, did he?
No, he did not.
Okay, we'll take one step at a time, that's, that's uh.
I mean, the minimum I'm, I'm expecting would be a hundred thousand, but uh. That's what we applied for, but the indicators.
One time, they might find a little bit more, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's, that's good news for Chad.
Yeah.
Alright.
Question.
What's that?
Can Chad ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I'm a little confused, Todd, because I thought our application was. Bound to be, you know, not meeting the requirements. And. I, how are they promising money on an application that? Was rejected, basically.
We revised the plan to show the twenty point one span.
Oh, and we did that in time prior to this March nineteenth, okay, thank you, I wasn't worried.
Yep, yeah, they allowed us to revise it and uh, we actually emailed it to them the morning of their meeting. They, because we had met with them, I don't know if you were. Can't remember now, I guess, we had met with them on site. Um, to talk about, uh, they had three things in there, one was about the budget, which was very simple to amend. Uh, we did that, one was the, the plan didn't address stormwater management. Well, we met with Gary Peacock and Emily on site, um, which was interesting because we, we parked. But we never ever walked down to the site, uh, because Gary said he was out the day before. And he said, looking at it again, he said, there's nothing we can do, he said, where it's located and how water runs, you know, off their map. So we didn't have to do anything with that, so the any other issue was to amend the plan to reflect. An opening span of twenty point one feet, so it's actually twenty and a half feet is the span. And uh, Davidson's amended that in time, uh, for that March nineteenth meeting, so.
So that amendment occurred, that, that meeting and the amendment both occurred. After the March supervisors' meeting, but prior to the March nineteenth. Conservation District meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, now I understand.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any, um. I think that was it on the engineer's report, Todd, unless anybody had questions, or any questions from the board? If not, we'll move on to uh, whether, we did get a written report um, from Stan, and Stan, you're on with us, I think, aren't you?
I am, Art.
Okay, anything you'd like to report at this time?
Well, I just want to commend the Board of Supervisors for leading out in uh, the. Among the schema-supported municipalities for getting your disaster declarations done, and also for closing your parks. Both, uh, both very good things to have done, so thank you.
Good, well, we, we appreciate your report and your support all the time, we appreciate that. Any questions for Stan? How, how have you seen Stan? Have um, a lot of municipalities closed their parks?
Uh, a lot of municipalities have closed their parks, um, that seems to be a wise and prudent thing to do. Uh, I know that uh, Shrewsbury Borough had their council meeting and they talked about. That they want people to get out of the house and, and do things, but. Uh, part of the problem, uh, apart from walking and bike and hiking trails. Uh, when you have a park with playground, playground equipment or basketball courts. Uh, there's, there's a, an invitation or a, a temptation to possibly congregate. And I think that that outweighs the need to keep the park open. Uh, just to give residents access or somehow make them feel like it's not as bad as it is. Because it, it's bad, and if anybody thinks that this is not a bad situation, they're kind of deceiving themselves.
Yeah, and you also have porta pots and benches and provisions and, and um. I don't, I think that um, if we drove around, we'd probably find that, that people aren't necessarily. Totally obeying the parks being closed. Um, I was out one time and saw that there were three or four cars parked on Miller Drive. And there were uh, people playing frisbee with dogs and, like, dogs running free, which aren't supposed to be there either. And people, people playing lacrosse and other sports where you're right on top of one another, so.
Yeah.
When we closed them, we said we probably weren't going to be hard at enforcing it, but at least we were saying to people, there are barricades up. And you shouldn't be here, and that's probably about all we can do.
It, it's called due diligence, you did due diligence.
Right, well, thank you, I appreciate those comments. Any questions for Stan from anybody else? Right, any questions on the planning commission or zoning and hearing board report? Hearing, hearing none, I think that's the reports, Todd, we ready for old business?
Yeah, if I can just comment on planning and zoning.
Okay, go ahead.
If you recall last month, uh, when this COVID nineteen kind of broke loose. We canceled the March Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board meeting. Uh, it was for a variance request, uh, regarding the critical environmental area, the steep slope. On East Forest Avenue, there at the Tom's Market. Uh, that was canceled until April, um, of course, here we are in April and uh, we're still, still dealing with the same thing. Uh, as most of you are probably aware, from the date of submission of an application. The municipality has ninety days to render a decision, zoning hearing board. Uh, that ninety days is up on uh, let's see here. I believe uh, April thirtieth or May first. So with that said, we do have a planning commission meeting, um, that is scheduled via Zoom. Um, as we're doing tonight, and that's going to be held the regular night, um. Which is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Seven o'clock, um, if anyone's interested in attending, any board members, you know, let me know and I can email you that. Invite in from, information uh, to log in. The zoning hearing board, it appears, is also going to be conducted, uh, the uh, video. Uh, hearing, and I don't have the details on that at this point. The zoning hearing board solicitor and the applicant solicitor kind of worked out the details, how that's going to work. Uh, tentatively, it should be held on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, again at seven o'clock. So, um. Again, if anyone's interested in that, and that's just a continuation from the planning commission based off of their recommendations, so.
Yeah, if you'd just include me on the, how to get in, I'd appreciate it, Todd.
But I'll probably do, just so I don't miss anyone, I'll probably share all that information with the full board. Um, you're not obligated to participate or listen, but if you choose to, that's fine, and it's not, you know, you'll, you'll get updated on it, so. Okay.
Okay, anything else on that report?
No, that's.
Um, supervisors, um, comments, I would just briefly have, um, just two. On March the twenty-sixth, and again, on April the second, I attended two different PSAT's Town Hall virtual meetings. On COVID nine and its impact and, and what municipalities could do. Uh, they were about an hour and a half to two hours each, Todd participated as well in the first one. There's actually another one tomorrow that I um, intend to uh, take part of. They've, um, interesting information, that, that's pretty much what they have. Uh, are there other supervisors who would comment on anything at this time?
Um, I'll just, a, a quick shout out to the rest of the group, I had texted Art and Todd. Um, that uh, I think it was. Earlier this, no, I think it was last week, um, I saw on the national news. Um, that uh, Shrewsbury got a shout out, uh, for uh, some, doing something patriotic during the Corona. Um. Uh, shutdown, and I'm pretty sure it was uh, homes and residents in the Forest Lakes area. Uh, but that they were gathering around a uh, a flag. Uh, maintaining social distancing and pledging the flag in the morning, and then I believe it was also singing patriotic songs. Um, so uh, that was, uh, it, it was nice to see, uh, was not expecting it. It was, uh, you know, and uh, you know, Shrewsbury, Pennsylvania, they're, whoa, wait a minute, what? Um, so uh, it was, uh, you know, not nice to, uh, you know, not nice to, to hear about some of our residents doing something like that. And uh, you know, ma- making, uh, making the national news.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that you sent that to me, that was interesting, although Todd did get a call, at least one, from people. Complaining about what they were doing, said they were not out there doing that at this time during the COVID nineteen that we're going through. Didn't you get a, you got a call on that, didn't you, Todd?
I, yeah, I got a call from a retired nurse, she, she just asked me if I had heard anything about it. Uh, she was a little concerned because she was thinking that it, you know, it was large group. And they weren't uh, practicing social distancing, and so I had heard a little bit about it, and then I saw your text, Dave, and. Um, so I did a little checking on it, and um, yeah, it, it was a good number of people, but it looked like they were, you know, keeping their distance. And so I called her back and told her what I knew, and she seemed a little more at ease, um. Knowing that, so.
Well, with, people are trying to do things to help get through the, the situation. Or that's what they were trying to do and, you know, make a little upbeat about it.
Yes.
Any other comments? Now we can move on to uh, old business, and I think, Todd, you just have a couple updates here.
Yeah, um, first thing is uh, just to uh, show you here. I don't know if anyone remembers. The uh, let me get it here. Yeah, it's not showing up on my screen to share, so, anyway, uh. Do you remember Shrewsbury Borough? Uh, needed to do some work down in the uh, Shrewsbury, or I'm sorry, Strawberry Fields Park. You know, the storm, the wetlands area and so forth, and um, so, make sure I have this here correct. Um, the last update that Brian gave me was. Uh, they started with the Army Corps of Engineers, since it's a wetland area. Um, and the Army Corps, you know, handed them over to Pennsylvania DEP. Uh, so they applied for the, the permit through them, DEP visited the site, and they determined uh, that the wetlands are. that the wetlands are performing exactly as designed and does not need any changes. Even though it's putting their sewer manholes underwater that weren't there before and encouraging, you know, moving up into the backyards of borough residents. Um, so the issue at hand that they're challenged with right now is, um, they, they contact, the borough contacted CS Davidson to see if they have a, in their files, a copy of the original permit. Um, we looked here, we couldn't find anything. We're going to look again. Uh, because they want to see if there's anything in there regarding, uh, that allows maintenance of that area. Uh, otherwise, you know, they're, they're saying if, if they, if they find a permit, maintenance is allowed, DEP would allow that work to be performed. Uh, but of course with DEP's oversight, you know, of course with the coronavirus and everything, they said it kind of put their exploration for the permit on hold. Um, and, uh, so um, I guess, uh, Phil, who was involved in that development, I guess that was his development. Um, I guess his, looked, looked in his files as well, couldn't find anything. Um, so currently they're at a standstill, um, and they did get an extension of the grant for another year. So I'm not sure too much will happen on that this year. So I just want to update you on where that was. And again, we're, we're not directly involved in that other than the sewer line passes through Strawberry Fields Park and, and the wetlands area. That was it on that one.
All right.
And the second item, the sanitary sewer lanes, if you recall, uh, this is for 11790 and 11802 Baltimore Street, uh, both of which are owned by Mr. Getz. Uh, there was a letter mailed to, uh, him from the CGA law firm, you know, explaining and outlining the heads about, it's, it's 31,000 and some between the two properties that is owed to the township. And the payments have been made since late 2016. Um, we do have the property liens already in place. And the letter stated that, uh, Mr. Getz needs to contact the township office or the attorney's office to set up or, or to pay it off or make other arrangements. Um, we are now at April 8th and I have not heard anything. Nothing. So, um, I do have an email into, uh, Stephen, who was at our, uh, last meeting. And, uh, I have not heard back from him. Um, unless something just came in. But, uh, so I guess the next step is, you know, they'll, they'll start the, uh, sheriff sale process, unfortunately. And that's all I have under old.
Okay. Anybody else have anything under old business?
I'm, I'm writing off the same notes as you guys. That's all I've got.
Okay. We'll move to new business.
New business.
Todd, you have a waiver request there.
Yeah, this is a standard, uh, trash waiver request, uh, for 11099, uh, Centerville Lane. Um, this was a, uh, property that's been vacant actually since November. Uh, Mr. Lewis, uh, passed away in the home. It's been vacant since that time and, uh, I don't remember if it was his daughter or son, I can look here, but, um, anyway, it's vacant and they intend that it, uh, will be for, for some time. So they're asking for a, uh, trash waiver.
Yep.
Uh, and, and I guess that would be retroactive to actually January 1st since it's been vacant since November.
That, that was the question I had, whether there was anything we could do about the, the month that, that they were being billed, that they never used it.
Yeah, they, they were paid through December 31st, so I would make it retroactive to January 1st.
That's, that's wonderful. I would, uh, go ahead and make the motion to approve the trash waiver, um, to be retroactive to, uh, January 1st, 2020.
I'll second that.
A motion, we have a second. Any other questions? Then we shall vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say aye. I vote for the affirmative. The waiver is approved. Is there any other new business? Um, I was gonna note that that for the duration of the stay-at-home order, but there are a couple of kind of routine matters that I think the board could just delegate to Todd to just act on our behalf. Trash waivers being one of them. Stormwater and maintenance agreements that are standard being another, at least those two things that, um, we wouldn't really have to address at the board if we just delegated those to Todd until such time that the, um, stay-at-home orders are lifted. And I'll tell Todd if there's anything else you could think of. I'm looking at these very routine things that are almost automatic approvals.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think that's a start. Uh, hopefully it's a very short,
Right.
short period, but, um, yeah, they're pretty routine, as you said, uh, the board has always, uh, accepted my recommendations for trash waivers, whether they're approved or denied. And stormwater, that's just a formality. Uh, because at the point it gets to the board, all the plans, zoning, building and everything have already been approved. Uh, so.
I, I did check with, um, our solicitor, uh, we don't need a resolution to do that. He said we can just do it by vote. So I would make a motion that until further notice, the board would delegate, uh, the approval of trash waivers or disapproval, as Todd sees appropriate, and the standard stormwater maintenance agreements, uh, to Todd, not needing to be acted on by the board.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments? We shall vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed, say aye. Five votes for the affirmative, so that motion is approved. Anything else under new business? You have some correspondence? Uh, are there any questions on any of the correspondence items?
Um, I had a question about the new Freedom Sewer, something or other.
Sure.
What, what do we need to do with, like, does that affect us? Is that just more informational? Like them letting us know where, where they are with that or what exactly?
It, it's only informational since we, we have quite a few residents that are served by the, both boroughs, really, Shrewsbury Borough through the collection system and New Freedom, uh, as far as the treatment side of it. Uh, there is nothing we need to do. Uh, there's nothing that we can do or say to change the numbers within that report. It's, it's just informational, just so that we're aware, you know, where they stand with the treatment plan.
Okay.
And it's, it's consistent with a meeting that I think, um, Paul and I went to a year or so ago where they went through what their plans are and equipment that needed to be replaced. The only impact it probably has is that somewhere along the line, those of us and I am one who are on that sewer system, will, will probably see some added increases. Um, but other, other than that.
As they have to maintain it.
Yeah, they're actually replacing a couple and they are really, really old pieces of control equipment. And they were pretty expensive pieces of equipment. Then aside from that, you know, they're looking at doing some things to also add some expanded capability. But, you know, it's like any other, uh, complex system. Things wear out and you gotta replace them. And some of their stuff is so old that they can't get parts for it anymore.
Hmm.
So, so they're, they're, I think what they're doing is necessary.
Okay. Uh, this, the, the, I, I had another question, um, in reference to uh, the email chain back and forth, uh, from the, uh, the one new homeowner that's trying to get final approval and whatnot. Did we get a resolution on that? Um, or are they still waiting for final approval to be able to move in because of the outbreak?
Do you want me to tackle that argument?
You want to take that one?
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's, uh, just real brief, um, if you recall with the non-life sustaining order, business order, construction, commercial or residential, all the associated trades, electrical, mechanical, HVAC, reorders, real estate transfers, you know, attorney offices and so forth, they are supposed to be closed, no activity. Um, then what happened is they were, uh, they did consider waivers. Uh, Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, reviewed those applications and then they made the decisions. Things got a little crazy for a while because DCED was handing out waivers like they were candy, uh, frankly. And their letter was very vague. It, it was a generic letter. Um, I think all they did was change the date and who was addressed to. And all it said was, "Your waiver, uh, has been approved as described in your permit or in your waiver application." Well, not just Shrewsbury Township, but every municipality in Pennsylvania had no idea what their application said. So we then ran into a problem with Keystone Custom Homes. Uh, they took the position that their waiver did not only apply to Keystone, but every independent trade, electrical plumbing, you name it, everyone under their giant umbrella that was not a business associated with them, but independent. And we were like, know that e- each individual business, you know, ABC Plumbing, you know, XYZ Electrical, they have to get their own waiver. So, um, you know, I wrote the, the letter and so forth up to DCE, uh, that Friday. Uh, told them we need some direction and, and nothing happened. And then on Monday, uh, we shared with me a letter from Ryan Holmes, which you know is a large home builder in Pennsylvania and Maryland. That letter was from an attorney representing Ryan Holmes. And that letter went out to all municipalities where Ryan Holmes does any business and says, said that um, what was nice about the letter in a sense was that it actually listed a person's name within DCED. And the Ryan Holmes letter said, according to so-and-so, that Department of Community and Economic Development, uh, your business under the guidelines, okay, remember guidelines of the, I forget the exact, uh, it, it's a federal, it's a federal agency. But they don't have any enforcement powers. They don't set the policy. They simply are guidelines. So anyway, long story short, DCED told them, they don't even have to apply for a waiver. You can keep building houses. So that leaves every municipality in Pennsylvania, what does this mean? I mean, the governor's order is very clear. Residential construction, no. Except for emergency repairs. So I think it was Monday, Monday, another letter went up and I actually referenced the, um, Ryan Holman attached it. Uh, and then on Monday, I actually, uh, faxed it up to the governor's office and just asked them, not just for Shrewsbury Township, um, but every municipality in Pennsylvania, we, we don't know where to go with this. I mean, you talk about a contradiction between governor, your office and your order and DCED. Um, and I'm sure, and I know, we were not the only ones to be asking. So Tuesday evening of last week, a letter, a, a statewide letter was issued by the governor and the secretary of the Department of Health. That, that was, I think, very clear and, uh, it simply said, "Any residential home construction," um, that they've been getting a, a lot of inquiries and a lot of questions. And this letter has sent us clarity. Um, there is no residential home construction to occur. Um, and that means, and it actually stated that if you received a waiver previously, a partial waiver, a denial or whatever, it's null and void. This letter replaces it. So, it's very clear we're done. So what we ended up doing, we sent that on Monday morning, I guess it was, or late Sunday night. Um, we didn't hear anything by Tuesday at noon. So I asked Art, Tim and Keith to have a video conference with me to talk about where do we go from here? Because we have such conflicting documentation and guidance. You know, and I had heard from Representative Kate Klunk. So after some discussion, we just decided, you know, um, we had done what we could do to try to get direction and we weren't getting it from the state. So we felt in the best interest without that clear direction, in the best interest of the future citizens and the citizens of the township, we were going to proceed and have those inspections completed, okay?
All right.
For, for the four homes in, in Hamilton's Overlook. So those four inspections took place prior to that letter coming out. So, long story short, all four of them received occupancy permits.
Great.
They have been resolved.
All right, so, so everything, and, and they're able to, to move in and not going to be homeless, like the, the one email I, I saw was, was worried about.
But I, but I do want, I do want to note, now granted, Keystone was thinking they were operating under a waiver at, at one point. But, you know, as the letter came out and clarified, that they should not have been working between March 19th and March 31st when the inspections were completed. But, that aside, um, those four have, uh, have been inspected. So we're back to no construction at all. Um, now we did start accepting, uh, just yesterday, we will now accept applications, building permit, applications and plans for review. But we're requiring the developer, the builder to sign a time waiver. Because under the Uniform Construction Code, we must act to approve um, or deny, uh, with, with reason. Uh, a plan within 15 days for residential, 30 for commercial, or the plan is deemed approved. Well, under a governor's order, we can't issue permits, so we want to allow the review so that we're not bombarded come May 1st if that's when it's lifted. Um, so it allows them to move forward. It'll, it helps us out, but we can't release any permits until this order's lifted. That was the short version. If you want the long version, I'll tell you later.
We, we could take that offline.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anything else? We're at the, um, another opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone still, uh, in tune with us that wants to comment to the board?
I think we lost one or two.
Uh, let's see here.
But Phil left.
Here, um, Chad is still here and, uh, Stan is here.
Okay.
As public.
Till the bitter end.
What's that?
Till the bitter end.
All right, I'm, I'm not hearing any more public comment.
I think we're good.
And so we would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that much. Oh, Jeff beat me to it.
Bet you.
So are you a second then?
Uh, I still maintain we don't have to second that motion.
No. I don't know. Todd says second, so at any rate, um, if we're all in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to adjourned?
Well, we, we get to stay on for a little bit longer anyway.
By, uh, five votes for the affirmative, we are adjourned.